Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming! Next time you gotta tell all your friends they gotta come too. I don't see caucus likes to laugh, so that's why we're here and this is something we were trying... Honestly, I have not been in this facility till about... Till about an hour ago and uh... I'm shocked, the custom's gorgeous, so uh... I don't realize what you don't even have here, but it is beautiful and I'm glad to be here. I'm Cliff from Cliffhanger Productions, I wanna thank you on behalf of our metal answer's our sponsor. Thanks a lot. So, I would better warm you guys up a little bit, but I'm really not funny. But I could tell you just a couple things that I think might... You might think it's funny. First of all, for those who don't know, I actually have a store called The Fun Ghoul Costume Company also in Rutherford. So, most people think I'm swearing at him when I answer the phone. So, they think that's funny because I say "I'm ghoul" and they like... And they just like start laughing at me. So, they laugh at me all the time, so that's the only people that laugh at me, hopefully you'll be laughing at me, but not me. We're gonna laugh at Miller and Martino because those guys are a tribute to Abbott and Costello to die for. So, I'm gonna save all my other comments in my feeble attendant humor in between uh, these guys and our headliner tonight which is Jeff Barnes. So, I guess uh, I'm gonna bring them on out now. Let's hear it for Abbott and Costello!
Yes, I'm Vic Martino, my partner Kevin Miller. Should be here shortly. We had a little bit of a problem with the weather and the traffic. We came out from Manhattan. We actually had a bender bender. Well, we rear-ended someone. And uh... Next thing you know, this guy gets out of a car and it was a dwarf. And he was real upset, he said "I'm not happy, I'm not happy." I said "No, which one are ya?" These are for always. But you know, my partner and I, we had some interesting gigs lately. You know, they're booking uh, entertainment on uh, Indian reservations. You know, very small, Foxwood, Mahogany Sun. Mic went out, can you hear me? Anyway, so... That's day one, two, three. The other one. Is this any better? Yeah. What happened to this mic? We're gonna need some lights. This is the test room, folks, don't worry. Try to get the southern mic on somehow. Anyway, so uh, what was I... Oh yes. Uh, they booked entertainment now on Indian reservations like Foxwoods, Hernixstone, Mahogany Sun. But we did this one Indian reservation, it was a Jewish Indian reservation. Maybe you've heard of the tribe, so sue me. We got real tight with Big Chief Rosenblatt. And uh, and then a week later, a week later, they booked us on an Italian Indian reservation. Maybe you've heard of that tribe, don't forget about it. Anyway, I'm talking to Big Chief's new guys. And a beautiful squaw walks by and the chief says "Chance." Then another beautiful squaw walks by, the chief says "Chance." Then a third beautiful squaw walks by, the chief says "Chance." So, I turned to the chief, I said "Chief, I thought Indian said how?" He said "He know how, he want chance." Okay, I think you're warmed up enough. Uh, anyway, as the MC said, we're gonna be doing our... I'm Vic Martino, my partner Kevin Miller and I are gonna be doing our tribute to one of the greatest comedy uh, comedy teams of all time, Bud Abbott and Lucas Costello. There he is, get over here, Lou. What are you doing? Get up there. Get up there. Get over here. Lou, get up here. I'm sorry. Get up, listen. I think we're gonna have to share the mic, this one's not working. For some reason, this one might dead.
Step in.
Oh yeah, hold on, hold on.
Very stupid, very close.
Nothing like a spontaneous moment, Jeff. Put your suit on, what are you doing? Listen, don't embarrass me, isn't this a nice place to do a show? Oh, lovely. That's a nice wall. It's a wall. The what? A wall's a wall, okay? Suppose you went over there, you made a hole in it. What do you wanna do that for? What do you wanna go over there and make a hole in a wall for? You just got to say what a nice place it is. What kind of example are you gonna set for the children making holes in walls?
I don't go around making holes in walls in places. If I wanna get out of here, I wanna make a hole in a wall. They got anxiety if I wanna get out.
Anxiety?
Anxiety, yeah.
Oh, stop it. E-excitement. Did you ever go to school stupid?
Yeah, I come out the same way.
You know, you're the next thing to an idiot.
Alright, move over.
Oh, stop.
Move over!
You know, I'm gonna prove to everybody here that you can't answer a simple question.
Why don't you just answer a simple question, I'll answer it.
Alright, let's see if you can answer a simple question. Let's say you have uh, five dollars in a cash pocket, twenty-five dollars in a cash pocket, now what do you have?
Somebody else's hands on it.
See what I mean?
Well, you ask, I ask you something simple!
Alright, let's say you're in the Grand Central Station.
What Grand Central Station?
One in New York City, Manhattan.
Well, where'd that happen?
Yeah, you're in the Grand Central Station. You're buying your ticket, now where are you going?
Like, where do you want?
Now, what are you doing in the Grand Central Station?
I'm buying a ticket.
What are you doing in the Grand Central Station if you're not buying your ticket and going somewhere? What, are you loitering?
What do you put there in the Grand Central Station for? How did I get in the Grand Central Station?
If you're in the Grand Central Station, you gotta be going somewhere, right? Now, where are you going?
Now, I gotta find someplace to go.
Find someplace to go.
I'll go by-bye.
Where's by-bye?
Where's by-bye?
Yeah, where's by-bye? Where's over there?
By-bye. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Baltimore.
Baltimore?
Nah, I don't wanna go, but I'll go.
Of all the towns in the world, why can't Baltimore?
I got friends in Baltimore.
Suppose you had friends in Philadelphia?
Then I go to Philadelphia.
Suppose I was in Philadelphia?
Then I go to Secaucus.
Alright, let's say you're in a ballpark.
I'm in a ballpark now?
Yeah.
Where's the foreign halls? Got 'em in the Grand Central, now I'm in a ballpark!
What's the first thing you do when you're in a ballpark?
Buy a hot dog.
Buy a hot dog?
Put out mustard.
Put out mustard, no way. Mustard goes with the hot dog.
Never mind.
Mustard's made for the hot dog.
Never mind, I don't put mustard on my hot dog.
Mustard and the hot dog go together.
Let it go together, I'm not spoiling any romance!
Oh, talk sense. You know where mustard comes from?
I know you don't sweep it off mustard, mustard.
No, certainly not. They manufacture mustard.
Yeah.
You realize it takes thousands and thousands of factories all over the world just to manufacture mustard? You know those factories employ millions and millions of people all on a kind of mustard? And you, what do you want them to do? Close those factories down and put all those people out of work?
Wait a minute! You mean to tell me that just because I don't put mustard on my hot dog, that I'm closing down all the mustard factories? Are you trying to tell me that just because I don't put mustard on my hot dog and all those people in the factories that make one delicious jar of mustard just for me? Well, the audience can tell not to make it anymore because I'm not ready!
Oh, you don't like mustard?
Who am I to support thousands?
What, are you a bitch shot, some bitch shot?
Well, sir!
You don't like mustard?
I don't like mustard!
No?
I'm ready!
What do you like instead?
I like Mr. Shyishishosh.
Mr. Shyishishishosh?
He can't even shave.
Oh, stop. But you don't like mustard?
I don't like mustard!
No, it's just something shy, you don't like mustard?
No, I'm just going around...
You realize that you're putting all those people out of work, men walking the streets doing nothing at all, husbands walking the streets out of work?
I'm not putting any husbands out of work.
You don't even know what a husband is.
A husband is what's left of a sweetheart after the nerve has been killed.
An orange. Now, stop the nonsense, will you? Alright, listen, one more question. If you can't answer this, we go on several minutes.
That's it, we're out of nothing, no more?
I don't wanna, I'm tired of being embarrassed by you. Alright, here.
That means I'm a bad boy!
Alright, let's see if you can answer this question.
Go ahead.
Alright, let's pretend we are forty years old.
Who's forty?
Just pretend.
What, you're ten years old?
You're forty years old. Now, let's say you're in love with a little girl that's ten years old. Yeah. Let me finish.
I'm going around... Now you're having with a ten-year-old girl!
Let me finish.
You gotta throw a little longer like that, no! Especially at Secaucus!
I'm gonna make a point.
Okay.
You're forty, she's ten.
Yeah.
Your four times as old as that little girl, now you couldn't marry her, could you?
I was a gump from the mountains.
Never mind the mountains.
Okay.
You're forty, she's ten, your four times as old as that little girl.
Yeah.
Couldn't marry her, so you wait five years. Now the little girl's fifteen, you're forty-five. Now you only three times as old as that little girl. So, you wait fifteen years more. Now the little girl's thirty, you're sixty. Now you're only twice as old as that little girl.
She's patching up!
Yes, yes. Now here's the question. So, how long do you have to wait before you and the little girl are same age? Do you have sense?
What's that? I mean, the whole thing is ridiculous.
What's ridiculous about it?
If I keep waiting for that girl, she'll pass me up. And she'll wind up older than I am.
What are you talking about?
Then she'll have to wait for me.
Why should she wait for you?
I was nice enough to wait for her!
Oh, stop.
She'll want to marry me if you have to marry me!
Marry you?
Yeah.
You know this little girl?
No.
Why should you marry a girl you don't even know?
The same thing as the hole in the baseball park! What am I doing with that girl?
You don't even know what a marriage is.
I know what a marriage is, it's not about three rings circus.
Three rings circus?
First the engagement ring, then the wedding ring, then supper ring.
Oh, stop. Now, don't knock marriage, it's a great institution.
That's right, if you're married, you should be in an institution.
You know, that's your problem, you need to settle down. Why don't you find a nice lady here, settle down and get married? A nice teacher or something. Wait a minute. Are you looking at her legs?
No, above that.
Oh, stop. There, it's a drink. Never look... Why don't you marry a pretty girl like that?
No! No, 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 no!
Why not?
I ain't gonna marry a pretty girl like that.
Why not?
Marrying a pretty girl like that, she's liable to run away.
Well, the girl's liable to run away?
The other girl cares?
Listen, I got a surprise for you.
You got a surprise from me yet?
Yeah, they're on a show.
Yeah.
I got two nice ladies waiting for us.
No, 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 no! Twenty minutes! No more blind dates!
What's the matter with that?
How about those two girls from one hour last week?
Yeah?
You had a pretty one. Yours had teeth.
Yours had teeth too.
Did you see that too? My girl had so much bridge where every time I kissed her, I had to pay for it.
Well, since we have this date.
How come everybody out here is... They're in Delaware. Look how far away you are!
Alright, get back here. Get over here. Uh, since the girls are waiting for us, will you give them a break?
Oh, why?
You owe me fifty dollars.
Abbott, I can't... I can't let you.
Why not?
Only got s... Only got forty dollars, that's all.
You got forty dollars?
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna give you forty dollars if you owe me ten.
Forty dollars if you owe me ten? Okay. I can go pay you ten. How come I owe you ten?
What did I ask you for? What'd you give me?
Forty.
So, you owe me ten dollars?
That's right. You owe me forty?
I don't change the subject.
I'm not changing the subject, you're trying to change my finances now, come on, now give me my forty dollars.
Oh, there's your forty dollars. Now, give me the ten dollars you owe me.
I'll pay you on account.
On account?
On account, I don't know how I owe it to you.
That's the way you feel about it, that's the last time I'll ask you for the loan of fifty dollars?
I'm already gonna give you fifty dollars now, all I got is thirty.
Well, give me thirty, you owe me twenty.
Just getting worse on the price, worse they owe ten, now I owe twenty.
Why do you run yourself into debt?
I'm not running in, you're pushing me!
I can't help it if you can't handle your finances, I do alright with my money.
You're doing alright with mine too.
Well, I asked you for the loan of fifty dollars, you gave me thirty, so you owe me twenty, twenty and thirty's fifty.
No, 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 no. Forty-five and forty-five is fifty.
Oh, there's your thirty dollars. Now, give me the twenty you owe me. Fine guy, I want a pound fifty dollars.
Wait a minute! How am I gonna work this type of money now? I got, I got a snake!
Wait a minute, you wanna double that?
I'll chill it.
Oh, no, no, not like that, come here. I'm the opening up, fair and square. Take the number, any number though between one and ten.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah.
Is the number odd or even?
Even.
Is the number between one and three?
No.
Between three and five?
No, I think that got uh...
Between five and seven?
Yeah.
Number six?
Right.
There you go, see? Control?
How did he do that?
Alright, uh, what's the matter now?
I don't know.
Alright, you wanna break in? I'll bet you all this money in my hand that you're not here.
What order? You're gonna bet all my money that you just took from me that I'm not here?
That you're not here.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, you're not in Philadelphia. You're not in San Francisco. You're not in Chicago. Well, if you're not in Philadelphia, San Francisco, or Chicago, you must be someplace else. Well, if you're someplace else, you're not here. Hey.
Hey! Didn't you just say that I wasn't in Philadelphia?
Yeah.
And I wasn't in San Francisco?
Yeah.
And I wasn't in Chicago? And I'm someplace else, I must be here.
That's right.
Well, I'm someplace else, I'm not here, that I can't take this money back, that!
Oh, stop it. You idiot.
Hey! We got hot children here today.
Yes, we do.
Hot children, you can think, scream out!
They're funny kids, they're good kids.
What, you all got a fever? Let's hear it again! This ain't Halloween, but the scary day they smell like the ghosts.
Well, what about the...
If you see a pair of hockey pants flying through the air, no problem.
Why not?
I'll be in!
Oh, stop it. What about the children?
Oh, I gotta, I, I want my own joke.
Wait a minute, you gotta joke for the children?
I wrote a joke off for the children. Especially just for the children.
Well, is it funny?
It's funny, I wrote it all by myself.
You wrote it?
Yeah.
It's brand new?
It's brand, brand new too. Ain't nobody ever heard it before.
And it's funny?
It's funny, I'm gonna tell myself!
You think the kids will like it?
I think the kids are gonna like it. They don't scare me again with the...
What do I do when I get thrown on the show?
I listen, I'm gonna tell a joke. I'm gonna tell a story. All by myself, and I don't want any interruptions from you.
You may, I don't say.
I'm gonna tell a story, I'm gonna tell a joke all by myself.
Alright, as long as it's funny.
It's funny, they're gonna get a kick out of it.
Nobody ever heard?
Nobody ever heard the joke!
Alright, won't be the judge in that, gotta tell.
You're not gonna interrupt me at all?
I won't interrupt you, tell the joke.
Oh, everybody's listening for this nice big nice story? It's about a whale, a ship, and Jonah. Now, who was this whale?
What kind of whale?
What do you think I do, hang around with him? What do you think I do, go onto a whale gang? Play everyday whale, that's all?
Oh, everyday whale, alright.
What's the fun to the sardine?
Alright, come on, hurry up.
Now, this whale, he was in the ocean?
What ocean?
A plain everyday ocean.
Well, I think the people would like to know where this place is.
Right, they pick out an ocean.
Oh, that's immaterial to me.
Okay, the immaterial ocean.
Oh, stop.
The whale was in the immaterial ocean.
Hurry up.
When he saw him, I'm gonna get it out! The whale was following, the whale was following a ship.
What ship? What ship?
A ship that swims in the water.
You mean a swift ship?
Yeah, yeah. Now, the whale was following a swift... Who ever heard of a swift ship?
I don't know, it's your story.
Well, I tell it, I... Now, the whale was following a ship, the ship was following a whale. Now I got the ship following a whale. The whale was... The whale was following a ship because he was hungry. And Captain Jonah, he was a captain of the boat, he didn't want the whale to capsize the boat.
Capsize. Capsize.
Capsize.
Capsize. What does that mean?
I don't know, words are my stories, I don't know what they mean.
Tell us what it means. Capsize.
Capsize?
Yeah.
It's like six and seven, eight, seven and a quarter.
Come on, wait a joke.
So, Captain Jonah didn't want the whale to six and seven each the boat. So, he threw over a barrel of apples.
What kind of apple?
Eight!
What kind of apple, what's all kinds of apple?
Apples did grow in the tree!
Well, crab apples, wolf apples?
Macintosh!
Come on with the joke.
The whale ate the macintosh. The whale was still hungry. Then Captain Jonah threw in a stool, what kind of stool? I did just in case you asked. A three-legged cat stool it was, precisely speaking. Now, the whale ate the apples, and the whale ate the stool. The whale swam away. Jesus, but the whale was still hungry. No, I'm sorry, I forgot the one part. The whale... The whale... What, the whale? Captain Jonah was a captain of the boat. He didn't, he didn't want his coat to be lost anywhere, so he, he sacrificed himself.
One more.
I need to stop before death!
Oh, hey!
I'm mainly sick of that boy.
Watch the language in front of the children.
I was, I was. So, Captain Jonah sacrificed himself. Now, three years later, the whale swam away. Three years later, he found that whale. They come up with... And what do you think they found? Now you're gonna get right to the lab.
Just one more.
You're gonna walk that back to...
Just one more interruption, I promise. One more interruption, then I'll let you tell the punchline. Alright, look, you're not coming out here in front of this intelligent audience. Okay? This intelligent, sophisticated audience. And you said this was a brand-new joke that you wrote that no one ever heard before? Okay, you're not coming out here and trying to get away with that old joke about the time they caught the whale, they cut him open, and there they found Jonah seated on that stool selling those apples at two for a quarter, are you? No, that's not the joke you came at it. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't think it was a joke. I knew my partner better than that. He said this was a brand-new joke, nobody ever heard, we're gonna laugh. So, you go ahead now, tell the folks the punchline, what they found when they cut the whale. Alright, tell the folks what they found when they cut the whale. You made a big deal on this. Oh! Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I gave away the punchline, I'm sorry. Come here.
You think the ghost died again?
Oh, come here. No. Stop it. Stop the nonsense.
I'm thinking the ghost died again!
Get over here. Get over here. Alright, I'm gonna make it up to you, listen, I'm sorry, I gave away the joke. But I got something, I got a surprise for you. You're, you're a big baseball fan, right?
Oh, I'm a big baseball fan, what?
You want baseball fans here?
Baseball fans on deck!
What's our team here? What's it? Yankees. Mets. Don't say that too loud.
You said you better move up into the back!
Anyway, you see, we're all baseball fans, I know, I know you're a big baseball fan.
I'm not a big baseball fan, I mean, I love baseball.
Well, I got a surprise for you. I'm gonna put it together into a ball team, and I'm gonna be managing the Secaucus All-Stars.
You're gonna be managing a baseball team?
That's right.
Do you think you could get me on that baseball team?
I try.
Listen, before I get on a baseball team, it's important that I know some of the baseball players' names, in case I needed them in a straight or in a ballpark. I'll be able to say hello to them.
Oh, sure, but you know, the Secaucus All-Stars, we got big names.
What do you think?
Big names, for instance, on my team, we have... Who's on first, what's on second, I don't know who's on third.
Go ahead, what are the guys' names on the baseball team?
I'm telling you, just listen. Who's on first, what's on second, I don't know who's on third.
What then?
Then I'll be out for you.
What do you mean managing the baseball team? Just said that, you know all the baseball players' names?
Yes.
Well, then who's on first?
Yes.
I mean, they got playing first base.
Who?
They got first.
Who? Who is on first?
Well, what are you asking me for?
I'm not asking you, I'm telling you.
I'm asking you who's on first.
That's the man's name.
That's his name.
Yeah.
They got first.
Who?
The first baseman.
Who is on first?
Have you got a first baseman on first?
Certainly.
Then who's playing first?
Absolutely.
Will you pay off the first baseman every month? Who gets the money?
Every dollar of them. Why not, the man's urgent?
Who did?
Yes.
So who gets it?
What's your name? And for all the man's title, John?
Who is?
Yes. You know, sometimes his wife, he's out of collection.
Who's wife?
Absolutely, nicely. I'll introduce you to her sometime.
You got a contract with the first baseman?
Of course I have a contract with the first baseman.
How does the guy on first base sign his name?
Who?
Can't get the mic.
That's how he signs it.
That's how who signs it?
Yeah, sure.
You gotta get a receipt from the guy, don't you?
I get one, Lou.
Well, what does the guy on first base put, like, sign on his?
No, I don't know, wait, wait. What signs his own receipt?
Who signs his own?
Yes, who signs his and what signs theirs.
The one I'm trying to find is what is the guy's name on first base?
No, what is the guy's name on second base?
Now, that's giving who's on second.
Who's on first?
That's what I'm trying to find out!
Don't change the players around.
I'm not changing nobody, what's the guy's name on first base?
What is on second?
Who's on second?
Who's on first?
I don't know.
He's on third.
How did I get on third base?
Mention his name.
If I mention the third baseman's name, who did I say is playing third?
Who is on?
I wanna know what's the fellow's name on third base?
What is on second?
Who's on second?
Who's on first?
I don't know.
He's on third.
There we go, back on third base again.
I can't help that, you mentioned his name.
Let's you and I stay on third base, don't go up.